Good evening, everyone. This meeting of the Essex County Board of County Commissioners is hereby called to order. Due to the COVID-19 outbreak and to be in compliance with the Governor's executive order, this meeting is being conducted remotely. The public is able to view this meeting via livestream on Facebook and YouTube. A link for the livestream is posted on a Commissioner website. To all participants in this meeting, please be mindful to put your microphone on mute until speaking. Additionally, please identify yourself by putting your name on the record each time before you speak. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Cooper. Absent. Commissioner Gill, absent. Commissioner Graham.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Luciano. Commissioner Mercado. Commissioner Sebel.
Here.
Commissioner Vice President Palmares.
Here.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will omit the salute to the flag since we are conducting this meeting remotely. However, for all of those affected and have lost someone to the COVID-19 virus, let us pause for a moment of silence. I have before me certification from the clerk that this meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Madam Clerk, are there any transcripts to be approved?
Mr. President, we have three. January, these are conference board meetings, January 27th, 2021, February 10th, 2021, and February 24th, 2021.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Mercado to approve the transcript. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebel.
You're muted, Commissioner.
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Mercado. Commissioner Luciano. Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Graham.
He's there.
Oh, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
I see. Okay. Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill, absent. Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Vice President Palmares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So move.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any topics of discussion?
Mr. President, there are none.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to the public comment session. Today's meeting is a combined conference board meeting, and we will vote on every item on the agenda. However, since we are meeting remotely, the public had the opportunity to submit questions and comments for consideration and can also call in. At this portion of the meeting, the clerk will have additional instructions for our callers. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, constituents were given the opportunity to call in or send emails for public comment prior to the meeting. If you are calling in, you will be acknowledged to speak in the order that your call was received. Emails received for public comment will be read after the calls are completed. At this time, our Public Information Officer will announce the callers so they can state their comment or question and be reminded that you have three minutes to speak. Please do not have your laptop or any electronic device on while calling in. At this time, we're accepting calls pertaining to agenda items only. Please note, you will have the opportunity to call back later in the meeting at the designated time for public comment session on non-agenda items. Charlo Malumba, our Public Information Officer, will begin this session now.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Charlo Malumba, Public Information Officer for the Essex County Board of Commissioners. We do have a couple of callers. Our first caller is Mary Rizzo. Ms. Rizzo, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Mary Rizzo. I live in Newark, New Jersey, and I am calling with regard to the budget agenda item. I'm calling again tonight to continue to press you to end your contract with ICE, which is obviously part of the budget, of the county's budget, and a distressingly large part of the county's budget. As I mentioned the last time that I called, Howard County in Maryland has just ended its ICE contract, so it figured out a way to do without the revenue that it was getting from ICE. So I would recommend that you reach out to your colleagues in Howard County to find out how they were able to do that in the face of pressure from activists like you've been getting for the last couple of years. But what I wanted to talk today about really was some colleagues of mine at Rutgers who are in the sociology, anthropology, and criminal justice departments just published an article in the Journal on Migration and Human Security that I think you all should read. It's called "Migrant Detention and COVID-19: Pandemic Responses in Four New Jersey Detention Centers," and it details the numerous ways that all four facilities in New Jersey that hold ICE detainees have failed to protect the health, safety, and welfare of those being held, and of course, that includes the Essex County Jail. So it's a long article. I can't summarize all of the points that they make, but I do want to mention a couple of things that stood out to me that seem particularly egregious about Essex County. First, the average length of stay of a detainee at Essex County Jail is 123 days. If that detainee has a criminal record, it extends to 310 days. That's the average length of stay. That average is almost twice that of Bergen County Jail. So one thing I'd like to know is why are detainees being held for so long at Essex County Jail? And actually, the length of their stay increased 30% between 2019 and 2020. So I'd also like to know why people are being held, why that length of stay increased over a year? And of course, the longer someone's held in the jail, the higher their risk is for contracting COVID, as well as for being severely traumatized by the detention system. Secondly, perhaps this length of stay issue is why Essex County Jail had the second highest number of reported COVID cases in New Jersey at 24, which is behind the Elizabeth Detention Center, which actually had multiple, large outbreaks of COVID. So rather than showing any concern for the health of detainees, what we find is that detainees talk about how they were ignored when they asked for PPE, or they voiced concerns about a lack of social distancing in the jail. So these are really distressing issues to continue to hear. So there's a lot more that I can say, but I'll stop. So most importantly, though, the authors of this study argue that the only way to ensure people's health and safety is to end detention entirely, and you have that power to end detention at your jail and remove this from your budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Whitney Strube. Mr. Strube, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
Hi, Whitney Strube. Last name is S-T-R-U-B. I live in Newark. I'm calling about the budget, and I'm very disappointed as well to see you doubling down on the racism, violence, and shame of your ICE blood money, which of course is not a phrase that comes from fringe radicals, but a phrase that was used by Senator Bob Menendez to describe these truly morally ugly contracts. And I would like to make it personal by reading you the testimony of someone who's been in your jail, Mr. Wilson Peña Lojo, and this is his words I'm reading. I have, and this is in March 24, 2021. "I have two years, 25 months to be in immigration, detained by immigration and in Essex County Jail. I was sexually and physically abused by the about 17 guards on May 17, 2019, and despite all of that, I continued to be detained, and also I had coronavirus for 22 days in Essex County Jail. And apart from all of that, I also conducted a hunger strike for 28 days in Bergen County in an attempt for ICE to free me, but they didn't pay attention to that. What they did was transfer me to Buffalo in Batavia, New York, and they have me in a center called Buffalo Federal Detention Facility, and here too, I have conducted a hunger strike 20 days ago. And today in the morning, I was to the point of dying because I fainted and the guards had to hold me against a wall. From there, they transferred me to the infirmary, and I have a lot of harms. I have chronic hyperthyroidism, gastritis, I have high cholesterol, and high blood pressure. For these reasons, I am conducting a hunger strike. The abuse I have suffered in ICE are excessive, so I ask that you support me and help me because I need support. I have been harmed so much, and I need special medical care upon leaving this place, and also physical therapy for all the harm I sustained by the guards at Essex County Jail. Sorry. My name is Wilson Peña Lojo. I'm from Guatemala, and I also have two kids outside, one who is six years old and the other eight years old, who need me. And apart from that, I have my sick mom in Guatemala who needs me to help her. My A-number is 087-382-768. You can look at my case. There is no problem with that." That's the end of the direct testimony from Mr. Lojo. You did, the prosecutor's office did investigate it in 2019, his claims resulting in a dismissal of them that was so transparently a cover-up that the Star Ledger Editorial Board, again, not left-wing activists, but the Star Ledger Editorial Board itself, wrote, "These cases of another man, Hernandez Velazquez and Lojo, demonstrates why there's so little trust in internal investigation."
Thirty seconds.
It's heartbreaking. I find this upsetting, and I hope you find it upsetting too. And so the three questions I have for you, if I can squeeze this in. One, will you publicly call for Mr. Lojo's release? That is one thing you could do for him that would cost you nothing and might be influential in getting him out. And secondly, well, actually, I'm losing track of my thought. That's really the main one. You know, will you have the courage to at least publicly call for his release? Oh, and second, actually, the other question I wanted to ask is, how much money did you make from his stay? Could you give me a financial breakdown of how much money Essex County derived from Mr. Lojo's incarceration in the Essex County Jail? I think that would be helpful in just conceptualizing what people go through and what it means for our budget. So, thank you.
We have one more speaker. Another speaker just came. Ms. Carrie Murphy, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Hi, Carrie Murphy. Is that all the information you need?
You can speak. This is your time.
Okay, great. I'm calling about the budget. The budget's obviously spent on other things other than the people being oppressed in the jail. You're actually profiting from that. Someone just spoke and was talking on a particular manner, but everyone in your jail, whether they're detainees or inmates, are being oppressed, are suffering, and it's all happening not for the safety of the people of your county, but for profit. My only question is, does anyone that's inside the Essex County Jail have a death sentence? That's one question I would like answered, and I'm pretty sure the answer is no. I'm positive the answer is no. I received, I put in an OPA request. It took you months to respond, but you did, and you told me that nine people died in your jail. So to further my question, because it wasn't properly answered, I would like to know between the years of 2020 till today, how many people have died in your jail? From 2018 to 2019, how many people have died in your jail? From 2017 to 2018, I would like to know how many people died in your jail? When you pass this budget and all that money that's coming in, I want to see where the money is going, because not supporting anyone in that jail, and especially, actually, for both sides of the jail, for the detention center, you're taking our federal tax dollars, and you're supposed to be putting it back into the jail to care for those people. You're not doing that, and that's the same thing for the inmates in that jail. What you're doing is disgusting. You should not only resign as elected officials, but you need to do a moral check. What you're doing is wrong. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we do not have any callers waiting to speak.
Mr. President, that concludes our first public comment session. We have no emails. We have received no emails for this session.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Be sure that this information is relayed to the administration for an appropriate response. Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinance or resolutions for introduction and first reading?
Mr. President, we have none.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinance or resolutions for listing purposes only?
Mr. President, we have none.
Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances, resolutions on second reading and public hearing tonight?
Yes, Mr. President, we have two. Resolution number R-2021-00159 and 00160.
Thank you. Mr. Jackson.
Good evening, Mr. President. Thank you. For this ordinance, a resolution, I should say, and also for the next one, we're going to request that the board adjourn these matters until the 21st. We are still working with the state of New Jersey to get our budget approved, and so the cap and also the actual introduction of the budget is premature at this point, but we are guard the optimistic that we'll be rarer to go on the 21st.
So we're going to reschedule R-2021-00159 and 160. Is that correct?
Yes, correct, sir.
Thank you. Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Johnson and a second from Commissioner Luciano on R-2021-159 and R-2021-00160 to adjourn these public hearing until April 21st. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill, absent. Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Vice President Palmares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So move.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to resolution number one. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mohammed and Ms. De Blasio are here to address this item.
My name is Hassan Mohammed. I'm the CFO. Resolution number one is to authorize the county to use a three-year average for anticipated revenue for the 2021 budget. The state is requiring us to...
You jumped to number two. Number one.
I'm sorry.
Read by title.
Mr. President, would it help if I read the resolution?
Please do.
Okay. Our resolution one, resolution number R-2021, I mean, resolution one, resolution authorizing the 2021 budget to be read by title only pursuant to NJSA dot forty A colon four dash eight.
Mr. President, I can help short-circuit this if you'd like.
Mr. Paul Aveckio, thank you.
Sure. This is just a statutory, not just, but this is statutory requirement of the local budget law so that we can be spared the reading of the entire budget, just have it read by title. It's a peremptory procedure that we take every year just for that purpose, and this will hold us until the next meeting when the budget presumably is back on second reading and public hearing, and it could just be read by title.
Thank you, Ms. Aveckio. Mr. McInerney.
I have no questions.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Sebel and a second from VP Palmares. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Gill, absent. Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So move.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to resolution number two, which is from the Office of Management and Budget. Please read it into the record at a later date. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. President, Mr. Mohammed and again, Ms. De Blasio are going to address this item. Sam, where are you?
Good afternoon. My name is Hassan Mohammed. I'm the CFO, and this resolution for, to allow the county using the three-year average for COVID revenues, affected revenues, would that anticipate it for 2020 budget, 2021 budget?
Mr. Paul Aveckio.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. McInerney.
This was designed to allow governmental entities in New Jersey to, since the COVID pandemic, reduce the amount of collections. Rather than be stuck with last year's collections as you participated in 2021, they allowed you to go back and average it out over three years. And in addition to that, needed to pass a resolution which you have before you now in order to do that. And that was one of the comments that we got on the, the comments and recommendations from the state was to pass this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. McInerney. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Johnson. Roll call, Ms. Clerk. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill, absent. Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Vice President Palmares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So move.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolutions three and four, which are from the Office of County Council, and please read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. President, County Council Gassio will address these items.
Good evening. Thank you, Courtney Gassio in Essex County Council. Resolutions number three and four are from the Office of County Council, as the president indicated. Resolution number three is a request for approval on a professional services agreement to provide legal services in the matter of Tariq Branch Jr. versus Julian J. Lawling at Al. It does include a claim against the County of Essex. This is a personal injury action by Tariq Branch and his guardian. This is an outside counsel contract with the firm of Inglesino, Webster, Waikasala, and Taylor in an amount not to exceed $50,000. The basis for the request to send this case to outside counsel is due to the significant injuries to the plaintiff and our request that we have an expert in the field of personal injury law handle the matter on behalf of the county. Resolution number four is also a professional services agreement to provide legal services in the matter of Shay Carr versus the County of Essex. This is a request for outside counsel with the firm of Chiesa Shaheenan and John Tomasi in an amount not to exceed $75,000 for the period of February 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021. This is an employment discrimination lawsuit that has been filed by an Essex County Sheriff's Officer against the County of Essex and individual defendants. Again, given the unique nature of the allegations raised in this complaint, the county seeking outside counsel to handle the matter on behalf of the Sheriff's Department and the individually named defendants.
Thank you, Ms. Gassio. Mr. Paul Aveckio.
Yes, Mr. President, I do have one question of Ms. Gassio on number three. Courtney, is this, is this firm just being appointed to this case, or have they been in the case? And I ask because I see it's a 2019 docket number.
So they are just being appointed to this case now. It has been handled by our, our office previously, and in fact, the attorney that was handling it for our office has recently left, which did prompt one of the reasons why we wanted to get outside counsel involved in the case, but this is the first time they've been handling the matter.
Mr. McInerney.
I have no questions.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Luciano and a second from Commissioner Mercado to take resolutions three and four as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Gill, absent. Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado. Commissioner Sebel. Commissioner Sebel. Commissioner Vice President Palmares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So move.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to resolutions five through nine, which are from the Department of Parks. Read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. President, Mr. Zaitz will handle these items.
Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks. Number five is a contract award to Beckridge Chemical for various salt products used at the Turtleback Zoo, not to exceed $549,306. Several exhibits at the zoo include saltwater, including the sea lion, the sea turtle, the aquarium, the touch tank, the otter, and the penguin exhibit, and these all require salt. Number six is a contract with Amigos Cleaning Service to provide janitorial and porter services at the South Mountain Recreation Complex. Specifically, they'll provide janitorial services at the Turtleback Zoo, the Swan Boat Bathroom, and then the Cody Arena as needed bases, such as when there's a big tournament. The hours will be, it'll be seven days a week at both the Swan Boats and the Turtleback Zoo, and then it'll be from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. over at the zoo, and from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the boats. Number eight is a contract award to, I'm sorry, number seven is a contract award to Clark Morenahan Landscaping to provide landscape maintenance services in the Northern, Southern, and Middle Division of Branch Creek Park. This includes flowerbed maintenance, grass cutting, leaf collection, snow fencing for the leaves, and... for the leaves, and I do believe we have a representative from the company on the line to answer any questions the board may have. Mr. Mornahan, are you on?
Yes.
All, you're on?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, yes.
Hello?
We can hear you.
We can hear you.
How you doing? This is Clark Mornahan.
Can you want to tell us a little bit about the project, about the contract?
Yeah, so right now, we're just waiting for the signed contract to get back to us, and we anticipate to start the spring cleanup. We have some annuals that we will be planting by the, the sports fields. And we will continue to maintain the grass and turf areas and the beds throughout the season. Do you have any other questions for me?
Thank you.
Joshua Zates, Essex County Parks. Moving on to number eight, it's a contract award with Ray Palmer Associates for, to provide pump and filter plumbing services. It's roughly eighty-five to ninety percent of the exhibits over at the zoo have some kind of pool, and this would be to provide pumps and filters as needed to fix and maintain those, those various exhibits. I do believe we have a representative on the line if there's any specific questions the board may have.
Now, let's get the person on the line and they can just introduce themselves, let us know a little bit about the contract.
This is Jeff Landry from Ray Palmer Associates. We've been in this business since 1962 and specifically serving the Turtleback Zoo in a service function for their pumps and filters, I would say probably for the past ten years. And this is really a redo of contracts that we've had in the past.
Commissioners, any questions? I, I have one. So you've had this contract for the last ten years. How many Essex County residents do you employ?
Uh, I would say probably two at this point, but it's, it's varied over the years, obviously. People come and go.
Okay, thank you.
Joshua Zates, Essex County Parks. Moving on to number nine, it's a change order with McRoberts Sales Company to furnish and deliver frozen fish and vertebrae for the Turtleback Zoo. We're looking to add additional 13,000, which is within the contract. The reason we're asking for this request is we've recently added third sea lion, and he is eating at an extraordinary rate. So we're looking to add some additional money to that. Happy to take any questions the board may have.
Okay. Mr. Paul Aveckio?
Mr. President, items number five through eight, as you heard, were all publicly bid, and each of those were deemed to be the lowest for the sole responsible, responsible bidder. And number nine is a contract change that I couldn't possibly top the description, Mr. Zates.
Thank you. Mr. McInerney?
No questions, Mr. President.
All right. Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Sebo and a second from Vice President Pamaris to take resolutions five through nine as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill absent, Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner Vice President Pamaris.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to resolution number 10, which is from the Department of Public Works. Read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a contract award to Mid-Atlantic Truck Center, the sole responsive and responsible bidder to furnish one new cab, cab chassis truck with an aerial platform to the Department of Public Works, the amount of $268,729. This is actually replacing a 20-year-old traffic truck. It's going to be paid for, for, by capital funding. It's an international HV 607 truck, a 2021 truck with a 50-foot aerial device.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Paul Aveckio?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. McInerney?
Just, this is a, this is not just a truck, this is a complete truck, correct?
Uh, yes, to you, Mr. President, this is the truck and the 50-foot platform.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner, Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Johnson. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner Gill absent, Commissioner Graham.
You're muted.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamaris.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to resolution number 11, which is from Division of Youth Services. We will read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, Mr. Martinez from the Division will handle this item. Mr. Martinez?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, this is Jason Martinez. I'm the Director for Youth Services Commission. Today, we have the Division of Youth Services is requesting approval of one contract to United Community Corporation for $61,200 for the Community and Family Empowerment Program.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Mr. Paul Aveckio?
I don't have questions.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions, Mr. President.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Johnson and a second from Commissioner Luciano. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill absent, Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner Vice President Pamaris.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you. Good evening.
Please be reminded, we will conduct the public comment session for the non-agenda items at the end of the meeting for any other call-ins. The clerk can give you, give them the call-in information.
Okay, Mr. President, the call-in information is if you're calling in, the number is 855 756 7520. That's 855 756 7520. Use the password, which is 72845Pound. That's 72845Pound. After entering the password, listen for the prompt to press zero to be placed in queue during the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolution number 12, which is from the Division of Community Action, and we'll read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, Mr. Smith is going to address this item.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, all the commissioners, madam clerk. My name is Eric Smith. I'm a senior data processing programmer for Division of Senior Services, and item number 12 is a contract award to the Metro Flag Company, who is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder to furnish and deliver veterans' flags on the date of award through December 31, 2022, in an amount not to exceed $21,693.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Paul Aveckio?
No questions.
Mr. McInerney?
I, I was just, I'm just curious, how many flags does this, uh, contract pay for?
I believe that is a total approximately 5,700 flags.
And these are given out to what, veterans' organizations to place on?
Well, in the past, and normally, we normally give those out to various American Legion posts. I have American Legion Post 105 from Caldwell, American Legion Post 201 in Livingston, Post 7925 at Fairfield, Camp Town Post in Irvington, and Post 493 in Nutley, American Legion Post 299 in Belleville, and Glendale and Fairmont Cemetery, they get their flags delivered directly to them, and also Bloomfield Cemetery gets 300 flags directly from the county.
And this, this is an adequate amount? Because I think one year, we were, we were running short a few years back.
Um, in, in the past, I believe there, I wasn't totally involved with the program, but I've been with senior services like 16 years, so I'm kind of have a little knowledge about the flag program. I believe that was about two years, two or three years ago, when they were running short, but now I believe that, um, they, they had, they had a slight increase in the number of flags that are being received now.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Mr. President?
VP Pamaris?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I was involved in that kind of request for a couple of years ago. It was brought to my attention that in Glendale Cemetery specifically, the number of flags that are delivered severely undercuts the number that's needed. It is a cemetery that, I think what may be calculated is the portion of a monument that the county did, but the number of veterans interred there is greater, way greater than that. I'm very much involved with the Scouts of 222, as my children have been involved there, and they do the flag planting along with Bloomfield Fire Department and other local groups, and so it's definitely not enough. The cemetery does a good job of recycling the flags every year, but inevitably, over the course of time, some of these flags deteriorate and are no longer usable. So I'd like to, Mr. Jackson, through you, if you could assist, to kind of come together with Glendale Cemetery and this office so that we can get an adequate number, so that we don't shortfall the amount of flags, because I've been present when we've run out of flags, and there's a lot of headstones still to be marked, and it is a very depressing day for the scouts involved, for the veterans involved, for the families involved, and no one wants to be a part of it. I know last year, there were, the county was very helpful in delivering extra, and I'm very grateful for that, but I think the ultimate resolution is to have a much better headcount of what we may need at flags, specifically at Glendale Cemetery. I suspect that the veterans groups may have a better handle in their respective towns, but none of them should fall short, and I'd like, I asked my colleagues to be supportive of this, because there's nothing more demoralizing than running out of flags when we're putting them up.
Through you, Mr. President. Mr. Smith, if we could make sure that we coordinate with the Vice President and ensure that we have enough, if we need some more dollars, we can figure that out, but let's, let's make sure we have enough.
Definitely, I'll, I'll definitely work on that and, and get the information and everything to you as soon as possible.
Thank you, sir.
May I ask that, if you can coordinate that office with our clerk, if you don't mind? So I want to make sure this doesn't fall off the radar, because it takes a little bit of time to coordinate with the cemetery and the groundspeople over there, and, and I want to be able to coordinate with our volunteer groups at Glendale, the scouts in particular, because I think collectively, we'll, we'll get the right equation that we need for that location.
Okay.
President Julius Coltry, this bid was for $21,693.60. What usually happens is this is a year-long bid, so what we can do is have them do the accounting of how many flags we need upfront. If we need additional dollars, we can come back and do a change order of 20% of the initial amount, which is $21,000, just in case.
Sounds good, Mr. Coltry. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Absolutely, Vice President, and we support you wholeheartedly, whatever you do. The great initiative. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Vice President Pamaris and a second from Commissioner Mercado. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice President Pamaris?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill absent, Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolution number 13, which is from the Office of the Sheriff, and we will read it into the record at a later, Mr. Jackson?
Thank you again, Mr. President. This is simply a resolution authorizing participation in the Emergency Management Agency Assistant Program for $110,000. It consists of a $55,000 grant and a $55,000 in-kind contribution and salary and wages on our part. This helps the county respond to and recover from acts of terrorism, natural disasters, and other emergencies. This is just, again, agreeing to participate, and next month, I mean, next, next meeting, we would come in with the actual budget insertion.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Paul Aveckio?
I don't have a question.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions, Mr. President.
Okay, Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Sebo and a second from Commissioner Johnson. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner Gill absent, Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamaris?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolutions 14 through 28, which are all commendations and memorials. We will read them into the record at a later time. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments on 14 through 28? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Johnson to take 14 through 28 as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner Gill absent, Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamaris?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, do we have any added starters?
Mr. President, we have none.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to report of board committees. Commissioners, do we have any report of board committees? Or any legislative reports? Are there any written communications? Do we have any unfinished business? New business to discuss? Hearing now, okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to the public comment session on non-agenda items. However, since we are meeting remotely, the public has an opportunity to submit questions and comments for consideration. They also have the opportunity to call in. Madam Clerk.
If you're calling in, the number is eight five five seven five six seven five two zero, and use the password seven two eight four five pound. After entering the password, listen for the prompt to press zero to be placed in the queue to speak during the meeting. You will be acknowledged to speak in order that your call was received. Emails received for the public comment will be read after the calls are completed. At this time, our public information officer will announce the callers so that, so they can state their comments and questions. Be reminded you have three minutes. Please do not have your laptop or any electronic device on while calling in. At this time, we're accepting calls pertaining to non-agenda items. Charlo Malumba, our public information officer, can begin the public comment session now.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Charlo Malumba, Public Information Officer for the Essex County Board of Commissioners. We do not have any callers waiting to make comments at this time.
Thank you. Mr. President, I also have no, have not received any written comments for non-agenda items for this public comment session.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioner, comment session. Commissioners, do we have any comments you would like to make at this time?
Mr. President, I may.
Absolutely. Vice President Pamaras.
Thank you. Just a quick reminder for all to share that Essex County's emergency food distribution event takes place yet again on a Thursday, this Thursday, April eighth, and it'll be held beginning at nine AM at the Essex County Donald M. Payne Senior School. So I'd encourage you, if you can share that, put it on social media. The lines are big, the need is still there. I know everyone in this meeting here is very sensitive to that and very helpful, and has participated in numerous occasions, so we appreciate the ongoing support. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Pamaras.
Richardson, if I could add something?
I see Commissioner Cooper is, has arrived. Yes, Commissioner Sebel.
I was at the Livingston Mall this morning at the Sears location, and the county executive was there, and many of the staff who work for Essex County. There was a very, very large group, well over a thousand by lunchtime, who had already received vaccinations. People were waiting in line. And I have to say, and I've been there many times, the, the turnout of the people in Essex County is unbelievable. Everyone I know is trying to get a spot so they can get a vaccination. So I have to commend the administration for doing all they are doing to make sure that Essex County gets what it needs. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sebel.
Mr. President.
Yes, Commissioner Johnson.
Yes. First, first, I would like to, I would like to take this opportunity on the record to thank the Governor of the State of New Jersey, New Jersey State Senator, senators, and my colleagues for the resolutions that you guys have presented to me in reference to my current tenure as a member of the Essex County Board of Commissioners, formerly the Freeholders. I am truly humbled by just the thought of you honoring me for time spent trying to improve the quality of life for the people of Essex County in which I represent as a commissioner at large. So I want to thank you guys for the recognition.
Well deserved.
Absolutely, Commissioner Johnson, well deserved. You've put your time in, you've been steadfast, you've been in the venues for quite some time. And yeah, you should smell the flowers while you can still smell them. And that's why it's important to acknowledge our colleagues for the work that they do while they can still recognize, you know, they can still recognize it. So no sense in waiting for some time down the road. No, you deserve to be acknowledged now. Now, I was so happy when the governor did that, when he was signing that legislation down in Trenton, because I was unaware of the fact that you were the longest-serving African-American or Freeholder at the time, but Commissioner in the state of New Jersey. So that, that's a nice tenure, and, you know, you've put your time in, and people keep re-electing you. So that says something about who you are.
Thank you. Secondly, as everyone know, last week I was in charge of getting people vaccine shots at West Side Park in the gymnasium. We did two hundred and thirty-seven shots. From that, the county exec and the administration asked me to do it again, and I'm doing it again on the thirteenth. So far, I have ninety-eight people waiting to be given the J and J shot on the thirteenth. And I know by the ninth, because that, that was the deadline that I gave, which is the ninth, that we have to have the stuff in so that we can put it all on their register and get these people registered shots on the thirteenth. So any of my colleagues that have friends and family that needs it from eight years old to eighteen, I mean, from eighteen years old on up, they're eligible to get the shot. Please get in contact with them.
Will do. Well done, Commissioner. Well done.
Thank you.
This morning, I had the pleasure to, I'm sorry, any other commissioners, any comments? This morning, I had the pleasure to be with the county exec and the sheriff and Senator Ruiz and Councilman at Large from the city of Newark, Louis Cantona, with the Latino clergy over Essex County College. They brought some of their congregants, so it was very well done. And the word, the message is getting out there, more and more people, as was stated, as Commissioner Sebel stated, are coming out to get that vaccine. It's important. You know, I called it, you know, kind of like Superman, but we got the kryptonite. So, you know, come get that vaccine, so, you know, we can all get back to some semblance of normal, whatever that's going to look like in the future. So the faster we get the vaccine, the most, more of us get it, the better off we're all going to be, because we're protecting one another. You still got to wear your mask, you still have to social distance, you still have to be attentive to your surroundings. But, you know, it's to put your mind at ease, you know, a little more. So if you haven't gotten it, get it. If you need information about what, what's going on in the county, the best way to get it, the easiest and fastest way to get it is to get the Essex County Commissioner app. You can get it from the Apple Store and from Google. Download it. Access a lot of information in one spot. Get the app. Thank you. More. Need a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.